The Arvada Chamber of Commerce has been hosting election forum events for nearly 45 years, and it is our great pleasure to have the opportunity to participate in this forum. For today's event, I would like to introduce the emcee for managing today's event. Our emcee for today will be Ryan Nalti. Ryan joined Adams County in January of 2020 as the Director of Economic Development. Within his role, he helps to steer the economic vitality strategy for the county, as well as helping lead on COVID-19 response and recovery efforts. He is also assisting with the commercial development in and around the Colorado Air and Space Port, which is owned and operated by Adams County. Ryan is also the Deputy Director for the overall Community and Economic Development Department within the county, helping to oversee planning efforts, environmental programs, building and safety, and housing policy. Within Colorado, Ryan has previously worked for the World Trade Center Denver and as the strategic consultant to CDOT, having helped the state on transportation planning, and specifically around freight management. Prior to moving to Colorado, he worked as a diplomat for the British government at the British Embassy in Washington, DC. Here, he served seven years in both economic development and policy advisory roles under the United Kingdom ambassadors, under three United Kingdom ambassadors. During his time with the Brits, Ryan led on the aerospace portfolio and helped the UK with its commercial space policy development and objectives. This also included leading on the UK's national efforts to start a series of space ports, as well as attractions, as well as attracting international and commercial users. Originally from Montana, he and his wife now proudly call Colorado and the Denver metro region home. Ryan, welcome.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I always love watching people's faces when my bio gets read because at the start they're like, "Oh, Adams County, this guy will sound normal." Then we get to the British diplomat phase, and they're like Benedict Cumberbatch type tone. And then the left hook comes at the end of like, "No, he's originally from Montana." And everyone's like, "I don't know what this kid's gonna sound like." So I can definitely see that the disappointment in your faces that this is the voice you've gotten stuck with, and I share your disappointment. So I'm very happy to be here today at the Arvada Chamber of Commerce's event. I think it's an exciting time to be talking about the issues happening here in Arvada, but also to have our six candidates here today to present about their passions and their visions for the future of the Arvada area. I do want to go over a little bit of the background and the format for the event, just to share kind of how it's been set up and to ensure the fairness that all the candidates deserve being here today. So the Arvada Chamber of Commerce is committed to hosting a forum that allows all candidates the opportunity to share their perspectives in a fair, open, and transparent environment. So looking for that full transparency, just so you guys know, there will be opening remarks that each of the candidates will have the ability to come up and say whatever they'd like, but then we'll move into a Q and A section. And in this fishbowl right over here is 12 questions. Those questions were initially designed by the Government Affairs Committee within the Arvada Chamber, using some interviews with the business community and stakeholders in general. Those topics were then turned into the question language by the Arvada Chamber of Commerce staff, and it is important to know that all of the candidates have received all 12 questions, although they don't know which four of those questions they are going to be asked, because I don't know which four of the questions they're going to be asked. We're gonna draw them at random down here a little bit later on. It is important to note that the Arvada Chamber of Commerce does not endorse any single candidate, but recognizes that its own membership will have their viewpoint and may associate with a candidate through either working on the campaigns, funding the campaigns, and others. But the chamber organization itself will not take a direct endorsement stance with any of the candidates. The format of today, as I said, we're gonna start with opening remarks. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna have all six candidates come up and give two-minute opening remarks. We'll go by district, of course, to kind of help you keep track of who's who, and then we'll move into having each district individually come up. So our At-Large, District 1, District 3, both of the candidates running for those will come up, sit up here with me, and then we'll go through and draw from the fishbowl and ask them the Q and A questions. And then we have a few kind of lightning-fire questions at the end, just to get to know them a little bit better. I have already talked to all of the candidates. You are absolutely lovely people, but I've also given you the threat already about time management. We are going to be very strict about it today. So opening remarks, you'll have two minutes. When we get into the Q and A, you'll have 60 seconds to answer the question, and then, as all of you have been aware, the rapid-fire, you're supposed to answer in like three to five words. But Kami Welsh is sitting right up here. She will have a card to hold up to show you you have 30 seconds left. That means start wrapping up the thought, hit that home, you know, do whatever you need to do, because if you start talking too long, I'm gonna start hovering right next to you. And if I have to, and Kami has the stop sign, if I have to, I do have ABBA's Dancing Queen on my phone, ready to blare at full volume. While they are a Swedish national treasure, I think it is important that we go ahead and keep time management so everyone gets an equal opportunity. The other thing I want to point out is, we know politics is very divisive today, and I think it is important that you all see the table tents that are on your tables about the promoting of civility. And each of the candidates has pledged today to give the level of respect that each and every one of them deserves. So they will give each other the time to be able to speak and present their points without interruption. We also ask that the audience members do the same. Please save your cheers, jeers, booing, everything, for a different event. You're allowed to clap as soon as they're done, but we would ask that you give them the respect that they deserve. It is not easy running for office. It's not easy getting up here next to my rugged good looks and having to come here and say, "Oh, this is what I believe Arvada should be." I know not everyone in the room is going to agree with every statement that is made today, but I think we should at least give them the respect to have that space to make that statement. That's why they're running. They want you to evaluate them and their competitors. So let's give everyone that. We are gonna go ahead and kick off here today. We're gonna start with our At-Large district, then move into District 1 and District 3. And as I said, we're gonna start with the overall statements. Each candidate's gonna come up, and then we'll move into the Q and A. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and give the At-Large folks, if you'd sort of come towards the front. I see Michael and Lisa, perfect. And what we're gonna do is, the order, we're gonna run through the opening statements is At-Large District 1, District 3. And for the opening statements, the speakers are coming in in alphabetical order by last name, just so you know why. And then when we do closing statements, we're gonna reverse the whole thing, just for fun. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and invite Michael Griffith, Michael P. Griffith, to come on upstairs, and you'll have two minutes when you wanna go ahead and get started.
Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you for getting that P in there. Oh my goodness. Morning people, good God. Yeah, I'm trying my best to be a morning person. For anybody that has kids at home, I feel you. I have two myself, and I'm grateful that my wife is taking care of them today so that I could be here. 7:30 is a tough proposition if you have kids. Lauren, I saw you walk in just a second ago. You know what I'm talking about.
Oh yeah, I have kids ready for school.
So in any case, thank you, Chambers, for having us. Thank you all for coming to join us. This is very important for us to have forums like these that are open, they're in the sort of the right tone and the right sort of pace for the election cycle that's starting up really right now. My name is Michael P. Griffith, and I'm running for City Council At-Large. I've lived in the community for seven years. In that time, my wife and I bought a historic home and restored it ourselves. We got married, and we had our two kids. So this is very clearly to us and to everyone that knows us in our neighborhood, our home. We are invested in the outcomes of this community, and we're invested in the future. I am a leader in the urban design industry, where I have 12 years of experience delivering projects within the front range in excess of $1 billion in construction and design work. So these are projects like roadway systems, mixed-use developments, parks, open space, all with a people focus. Projects like the 16th Street Mall, which we just finished and will break ground in about two months, completely redesigned, a historic landmark. Projects like Sloane's Lake with 850 units, 20% affordable housing. Over the last five years, I've been a member of Planning Commission, where I'm currently the vice chair, and in that time, I've seen dozens of projects that have shaped our community. I'm running because I believe that Planning Commission has trained me for City Council, and my background would be valuable on City Council to oversee the growth and development that our city is experiencing now and in the future. The decisions we make today will dramatically affect the quality of life tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, for coming up, and thank you for setting the example on time management. Next, Lisa?
Neither am I. All right. Well, let me start by saying I'm a little nervous. So I appreciate everyone coming and listening and hearing what I have to say. Thank you all for hosting this forum today. I recall a few years ago helping craft the chamber candidate questions, and now it seems I've gone full circle today. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lisa Smith. I'm a former military veteran turned social worker. I work for Team Rubicon, a disaster response organization that deploys veterans and first responders to disasters and emergencies across the globe. Actually, my first deployment was in Colorado in Long Mountain Lions in 2013, where we responded to floods. I've been an active member of the chamber for about three years now. While I'm not a business owner, I am a business ally. And I don't just say that, I do that through action. I serve on the Government Affairs Committee, the Resiliency Task Force, and had the honor of being on the selection committee for our chamber board. I'm running because I feel a strong sense of service to my community rooted from my military service. I believe I'm the right person because I've had over 15 years of experience, demonstrated history of success, and public service. My broad experience and strong leadership skills are needed in Arvada to help tackle the most pressing issues right now. I've served in austere environments while maintaining a pragmatic and level-headed approach. I've worked collaboratively to tackle our complex issues around public safety and housing. Through my service in the military, work in the Boston Mayor's Office, and Team Rubicon, I've piloted community initiatives, promoted public programs, and helped communities recover from disasters. I truly believe in this community and its strong leaders, and we need to engage all parts of our community. I love Arvada, its people and its local businesses, and it would be an honor to represent you on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa and Michael. Next, we're gonna go and move on to District 1. So if I could ask Chelsea Kanda and Randy Mormon. We're gonna start with Chelsea.
Thank you so much for hosting this event this morning and inviting us all to come speak to you. My name is Chelsea Kanda. I am running for District 1 for Arvada City Council. I am a wife. I'm a mom of four kids. I have three boys and one little girl. I spent 11 years teaching high school English at a couple different charter schools in Colorado, and I have a master's degree in Gifted and Talented Education, and I spent the last six years as the Gifted and Talented Coordinator at the academy where I was teaching. Currently, well, my husband has owned a business for three years, and at the end of last school year, I decided to take a step back from education, and now I help him run his business here in Arvada. I am a Colorado native. I grew up in Littleton, but we've been here in Arvada for eight years. What we love most about living in Arvada are the opportunities that we have for our family, the many youth sports and activities that my kids participate in, keep us busy, keep us happy, keep us healthy. And we love all the outdoor spaces and the parks and all the fun things that we get to do here in Arvada. So I chose to run because I want to preserve all of those family-friendly things that make Arvada great, and I don't think I even came close to my two minutes. But there you go.
Thank you very much, Chelsea. Thank you very much, Chelsea. Brevity is actually a very good thing in politics, so thank you. Next, we'll go ahead and invite up Randy Mormon. Randy, if you wanna come on up, and then we'll move into District 3 right after that.
Well, good morning, and thank you to the chamber for hosting this great event, and thank you all for being here. My name is Randy Mormon. I'm running for Arvada City Council District 1, and I'm running for a very personal reason. 10 years ago, my husband and I moved to Arvada, and we didn't know that many people. And we started fostering through Jefferson County Foster Care, and the community really welcomed us and came out and supported us. And then four years ago, my husband had a stroke, and again, the community was there for us, gave us food, came to our door, and even gave us a shoulder to cry on. And so I'm running to give back to my community that's been there for us. I love Arvada, and I have the passion and the experience to make sure that we grow and develop in a way that we want to, in our vision for community. We are facing many challenges, from the pandemic to our roads and aging water infrastructure, to creating more safe, livable neighborhoods, and having more affordable and attainable housing options. And of course, we need to strengthen our resiliency as climate change approaches and gets worse. I will bring a lot of experience to the City Council and a new perspective as a teacher, a scientist, and a foster dad. I will look at all the problems that we face with a critical lens, using critical thinking skills, analyzing the data, evaluating all our options, and making sure that what we do is right for Arvada. And we do it collaboratively, and we bring people together. Finally, I am also an employee of a small recycling nonprofit, and I own a small pie baking business out of my home. So I want to make sure that we are dedicated to building an economic environment where everyone can thrive. I want to work for you, and so I thank you today for giving me the time to be here.
District 1 really hitting it on the time management. I appreciate you guys. All right, we'll go ahead and move to District 3. So Councilman Marriott, if you wanna go ahead and start, and then Ms. Schuckman?
Where... Susie? There. Fantastic. Your team. Well, thank you for having us here today. Thank you to the chamber for organizing these. These events are incredibly important. I'm a lucky person. I got to grow up in Arvada, and I've had great success in my life. And when I look back and reflect on my life, I can see clearly some of the genesis of that success was Arvada. I got to grow up in a safe community, in a community with exceptional parks, recreation opportunities, a community with great schools, neighborly neighborhoods, and a great economic climate, where we all had a chance to be successful. And without a doubt, that set the foundation from which I have grown into great success. As I'm now on City Council, I look back, and I feel like that's my job, is to do that for not only my children, who are Arvada residents and growing up here, but all the children who are not even here yet. And so I think it's really important for us to keep in, keep our community what it always has been and bring it forward into the future in a similar way, so that we can create this environment where all our residents can have the great success that I was privileged to by growing up here. So I really look forward to answering the questions, and thanks for having us here. It's great, great to see everybody this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. And next up, Susie Schuckman.
Good morning, everyone. First and foremost, I want to thank Kami and the entire staff of the Arvada Chamber of Commerce for always hosting such special events that really promote community. And I also want to thank each of you for taking time to come out and hear from this motley crew bright and early this morning. My name is Susie Schuckman, and I'm running for Arvada City Council. I'm running for Arvada City Council because I truly know what the daily lived experience is for a lot of Arvadans. I experienced those highs and lows just like everyone else, and after the past 18 months, we've all gone through some incredibly difficult times. I found myself so grateful to call Arvada home. It's one of the main reasons why I'm interested in investing in the future of Arvada. A little bit about me, I've been serving nonprofit organizations for the past 15 years. I've worked with families experiencing child abuse and neglect, drug and alcohol abuse, food scarcity, homelessness, and I've been working with women to reengage them in the workforce. The abilities that this takes to not only talk to diverse communities, but to truly listen to them is exactly what I will bring to Arvada City Council. On a daily basis, I am lucky enough to be able to spend time working with individuals, civic leaders, and business partners. I engage them through this work to get them excited about reinvesting in some of those really tough subjects that I just talked about. And while we might not always agree on how best to find those solutions, I have consistently and effectively provided results for families, children, and women. This is the type of effective relationship building and service-based leadership that I will bring to Arvada City Council. So I've spoken to so many of our neighbors lately that are interested in engaging with a city council that is taking proactive action to invest in dependable and creative development. They want us to work on sustaining our parks, and they want us to advocate for a more inclusive voice in Arvada, so that all families of all shapes and sizes feel incredibly welcome in our outstanding community. This is exactly what I will bring to Arvada City Council come November. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schuckman. I think we should give another quick round of applause for all six of the candidates that are here today. As I said in the opening, and I'm sure every politician who is in the audience knows this, it is not an easy job to do. I think sometimes that you get a bad rap, but you go through the slog of not only the election cycle, but all of the phone calls, both back and forth and stuff, and it's not an easy process to go through, both for themselves and for their families. So I'd like to, if you're the spouse of one of the candidates that are here, I'd also like to give them a round of applause as well. So as we've done all of the opening statements, you've gotten to hear a little bit of the candidates' viewpoints, what they see in Arvada needs, but now we're gonna move into our Q and A session. And just to recap, the questions were devised by kind of interviewing the business community and talking with the Government Affairs Committee. The staff actually wrote the individual questions, and all of the candidates have seen the language for all 12 questions, although they don't know which one they're gonna get because we're gonna draw it randomly from the bowl. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and invite up District 1, both Chelsea and Randy, to come and join me on stage, and we're gonna go ahead and move into the Q and A session. But give us a quick minute while we make sure we get all the tech side handled as well, too, please. Go ahead and take a seat. Thank you, Randy and Chelsea, for joining me up here. I'm gonna go ahead and just move right into the Q and A. Take a deep breath, you guys are both good. And what we'll do is we'll go ahead and start, and I'm gonna ping pong back and forth, so each of you will get an opportunity to speak first on one question, and then the next person will get first on the second one. But we'll each give you 60 seconds, and Kami will be holding up the usual signs, so if I have to cut you off, I will be cutting you off. How can the Arvada City Council ensure the right mix of growth and development within Arvada? I'm gonna go ahead and start with Randy this time, and then Chelsea, you'll get a second.
Great. That's an excellent question. One of the things that I really value about living in Arvada is I think about my neighborhood. And in my neighborhood, we have kids that are always out playing in our driveway because we have the longest driveway, and so we have a basketball court up for them, and they are riding their bicycles in the street, and we just have a really great sense of community in our street. And, you know, during the pandemic, we had, it was a place of solace to be able to come out and socialize outside safely with our neighbors. And so that sense of community, I want to protect as we grow and develop, and we have to be really smart about balancing that and protecting our green spaces and ensuring that we do it in the right way. Growth is gonna happen, but we've got to protect our neighborhoods and what we love here about Arvada, and make sure that we do it in a transparent way and that the community has strong involvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy. Chelsea, same question.
I think Randy had a lot of really good points right there. Definitely protecting our communities and our open spaces is a really, really important priority. I think when we talk about growth and development, we should be looking to approve products, no, projects, excuse me, projects that add to Arvada in a positive manner. And I believe that the charters that we have at City Council already give some really good boundaries, and so I think that on City Council, I would just make sure that we're following those charters to make sure that the growth and development that's happening is appropriate.
Thank you very much. So I'll grab the next question, and Chelsea, you'll have first answer of this one. And then I gotta be able to open and read at the same time. What do you believe the role of the city of Arvada should be in influencing the minimum wage? Do you support universal minimum wage increase? Chelsea, you have the first.
I can't find my notes.
Okay.
Generally, I definitely do not support universal minimum wage. As a business owner, I know how hard it is sometimes when I'm running payroll, and I have to skip a paycheck for my family, my husband, and myself, so that our employees get paid. And, you know, when you force minimum wage, that's what happens to business owners, is they have to find other ways to make ends meet. A lot of times, the cost gets passed on to consumers, and I just don't think that, I don't know any business owners who are out to hurt their employees. I think that they are the ones who want to pay a fair wage, and they need to be allowed the responsibility and the rights to do that in the way that they see fit.
Thank you much, Chelsea. Randy, same question.
Thank you. You know, during the pandemic, I've really been thinking a lot about our frontline workers in the grocery stores and convenience stores, and they, and our healthcare workers and our teachers. They really have put themselves out on the line and, you know, made sure that our community continues to run. And many of them, it's gotten to the point now where they can't afford to live in Arvada. And so I think about that, and I think that, you know, we need to make sure that everyone who wants to live and work in Arvada can. So there's many tools in the toolbox. We need to take a holistic approach. Minimum wage increasing can be one of them, but we've got to make sure we protect our small businesses. But we also have to look at how do we bring more good-paying jobs to Arvada? How do we provide more affordable and attainable housing and lower those costs for transportation? We've got to take a holistic approach.
Wonderful. Thank you very much to both of you. There are growing concerns and discussions around public safety and crime in Arvada. If elected, how do you support addressing these concerns? We'll start with Randy first this time.
Thank you. This also has been on my mind a lot. In the spring, I remember my neighbor very vividly coming out of their house screaming because someone was trying to break into their truck in the driveway. And, you know, as I'm talking to people in District 1, this comes up as one of their top concerns. They're concerned about the safety of their children, being able to walk to school and walk to shops. So we really need to look at how we as a community are gonna address these issues that I believe there's a lot of underlying factors that we need to make sure we are providing the services that people need in this very hard economic time, and making sure that people have what they need to address mental illness, and also helping our small businesses because, you know, it's gonna take all of us to come together and address this.
Thank you very much. Chelsea, same question.
I actually think that the rise in crime and the lack of public safety in Arvada is our biggest challenge that we're facing. If we don't have enough officers on our streets, then of course our communities won't be safe. So I think City Council's job is to make sure that our police officers are fully and appropriately funded. Yes, they ought to be held accountable, but they need to be there, and they need to be trained adequately, and they need to be, they need to have everything that they need in order to protect our citizens.
Thank you very much. And we'll go for the last question here with District One, and Chelsea, you'll have this question first. What do you believe the role of the Arvada City Council is in ensuring that we have an equitable and inclusive community?
I think the role of City Council on that one is pretty small. The government's role is to protect citizens' rights and freedoms, and I think the rest of it tends to take care of itself.
Okay. And Randy, last, same question.
I think we have a very important role. As I mentioned earlier, I'm a foster dad, and several of our kiddos that came into our home were feeling very marginalized because of the color of their skin in our community. They didn't feel welcomed, they didn't feel safe going to school. So I really believe that we need to have a community that is welcoming, and we do everything we can so that people feel welcome and safe and can thrive here. And so I believe that having a, as the city has already done, to start to have a task force to look into this, to look into ways to make sure that everyone has opportunity and the same fair opportunity, and has access to services and resources that they need to prosper here in Arvada.
Thank you very much, Randy and Chelsea, for your answers to those questions. And then, as I said, we are going to have a quick rapid-fire one. It's not going to be too scary, although Kami did let me add a couple of questions, so you should be vaguely nervous about it. So I'm going to just, as we've done before, ping pong back and forth. So we'll start with Chelsea, and then move to Randy, and then back and forth, and three words or less is apparently the rules. What is your favorite restaurant in Arvada? Chelsea?
Jack's.
Jack's. Randy?
Arvada Tavern.
Arvada Tavern, all right. What did you want to be when you grew up? Randy?
Veterinarian.
Veterinarian. Chelsea?
A teacher.
A teacher. What's your biggest pet peeve? Chelsea?
Unmade beds.
Unmade beds. Randy?
Not being listened to.
Not being listened to. Ooh, politics, man. Who is your role model, Randy?
Jane Goodall.
Jane Goodall, nice. Chelsea?
Jesus.
Jesus, okay. And then, favorite sweet treat?
Pecan roll.
Pecan rolls. Randy?
Homemade apple pie.
Homemade apple pie. And then, I want to add in this little quick set of questions. You guys are so focused right now on Arvada. But Chelsea, I'm buying you a plane ticket to anywhere in the world. Where do you want to go? Pensacola, Florida. Randy?
The Galapagos.
And window or aisle seat?
Window, please.
Window?
I truly don't care.
Truly? You're a great traveler, I love you. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much to our District One candidates for being up here. Randy, thank you very much. Chelsea, thank you very much. Good luck to both of you. All righty. Next, we're going to go and have our at-large folks, so if I could have Michael and Lisa go and join me here on stage. You guys now know the drill.
There.
Yep. And this gentleman's going to come up and just make sure you're all mic'd up appropriately, so bear with us for another couple of seconds.
Well, these kind of hug you, don't they?
Oh, yeah, they do.
I don't know what to do with my arms.
I'm trying to figure if I sit forwards or back.
I'll do one down and one up.
There you go. Got to look the part. Yeah, there you go.
I can ask you questions I want to hear.
I know. It's the luck of the draw. So now we're going to move on to hear our at-large with Michael and Lisa. As you guys know, there's now eight questions left, and we're going to still draw those at random. Our District Three people will, of course, know which four questions they're getting because they're the only four left in the bowl. But as we did before, I'm going to ping pong back and forth, so each of you are going to get the chance to answer a question first, and then the second person gets to speak. We're going to go ahead and start with Lisa. Describe your take on the intersection between regional and local efforts. When should work happen at the regional level, and when should it happen at the local level?
All right, thank you. So Arvada is a home rule city, and I've had the honor of serving on the City Charter Review Committee under the Honorable Mark McGoff. This process showed me that we have a strong city team that is working hard for our city. Typically, you take regional approaches, and they increase the resources and support that you can tackle the issue. Our challenges are not unique to Arvada. Westminster, Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, all have similar challenges. I believe the best way to solve complex problems is always through collaboration, and I will take this view on council. For example, homelessness is a regional issue. Government entities should work together with cities and nonprofits to tackle this homeless issue. I would look at every problem uniquely to ensure that we're tackling it in a regional issue, or if it's unique to Arvada, specifically work within Arvada and tackle it in-house.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Michael, same question.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a great question. It's an easy question for me as an expert in transportation and engineering design. Regional issues are just that, they're regional issues. They're the things that connect us to the larger area that we inhabit. Local issues, and this is really important, need to remain local issues. There's a certain scope within our city government that needs to be a part of that local constituency. So the specific example I would use is the thing that moves us all around, roadways. When you get to the edge of Arvada, the road doesn't end, it connects to another area. So regional issue, absolutely the connection from different areas of town, in the city, in the metro, in the front range, and local issues are just that. Let's keep it local.
Thank you very much, Michael. You'll have first crack at this question. If elected to the City Council, what will you do to understand the diverse and growing needs of Arvada?
Thank you. Another good question. I think one of the important things about Arvada is that we do have diverse and growing needs. There's many different types of residences and experiences and small business communities within Arvada, and I would champion the continuation of those small business ecosystems in special, unique areas of the city. I think if you look at our comprehensive plan, there's a pretty well-established mapping of the city that says that, look, these are areas that are special and unique, and they ought to stay that way. So in addition to looking at that and infrastructure needs, I think I would just be a champion overall to keep our areas that are special and different, special and different. Thank you. Here you go.
Yeah, the mic is the way. Lisa, same question.
Awesome. One thing that I pride myself on is having a diverse network and connections in the city. There are many of you in this room that I've turned to to be advised on how things are going in the small business community. Immersing yourself in various parts of the community is essential to be a strong and competent leader. That is why I'm part of organizations like the American Legion, the Elks Lodge, and most recently Kiwanis. Thanks, Mike. Additionally, I've spent the last three months going on a listening tour with HOAs throughout Arvada, and it has been enlightening. When elected, I hope to continue to conduct outreach, listening tours, and attend events to ensure that I stay abreast of all of the issues and ensure I'm understanding it from all sides of the aisle. While I lean on data and reports for experts to help build us, build out strategic plans, I believe that that's important for tackling imperative issues. And we also need to elect leaders and strategic thinkers on council because I believe that is what we need in our background to ensure we move forward with the city.
Thank you very much. Lisa, you'll have the first crack at this longer question. If you follow some of the Arvada Facebook pages, it can seem at times like the community is very, very divided. What would you do if elected to the City Council to create that sense of community for all residents and businesses, especially those who didn't vote for you?
Well, I hope everyone votes for me, but that's another thing. So if you look at social media, it can be fatiguing, but then you go to the community, you go to events like this, and you feel reinvigorated. These are passionate people, and I think we need to understand that the content that's being shared on social media is not real life. There's, I think that we can tackle this in a two-fold approach. If there's one thing that I learned in the military, is people want to come together for a solution. You just need to create the space to do so. I think we need to work on aggregating all of the events and communication and disseminating it more effectively. I think there are people that don't know where to look for information to connect. Once we get people in person and off their screens, that is when true relationships and camaraderie builds in the community. So I'd like to see us be able to share that information a little bit more effectively, and additionally, find groups and events to collectively bring people together.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Michael, same question.
Thank you. I think this is a funny question because I, you know, certainly don't believe that anybody's capable of solving fighting on the internet. That's going to continue forever. But one thing I would like to say is that events like this are kind of a critical piece in bringing our community together. You know, we come together with different viewpoints and backgrounds, and we have conversations and ask critical questions. So I'd like to see, you know, when I'm on council, less siloing of ideas, less echo chambers. Let's get in the room and have a conversation about what's right for our city moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. And the final question for our at-large candidates, if I can do it correctly. Many businesses and residents have expressed concerns about homelessness in Arvada. What approach would you take to address these concerns? And we'll start with Michael this time.
Thank you. This is an important issue, and I'm glad that Lisa pointed out this is a regional issue, and maybe that was Randy. Either way, you know, homelessness is a large issue, and it's complicated, but I think it's important to understand that whenever it looks like there's nothing being done, trust me, there's plenty being done in the background. There's conversations, there's meetings, there's committees, there's a lot of people looking at this issue across the country and here locally in Arvada. And in my opinion, the best way to look at this is to find a strong middle-of-the-road stance on it. So if we're going to have a little bit of a negotiation and a trade-off, we need to understand that the right-of-way needs to be clear and safety needs to be enforced. But at the same time, we need wraparound services for people that do want help that are experiencing homelessness. So for me, find that middle-of-the-road, have that negotiation and trade-off, and inform community members that you have a plan and move forward.
Thank you very much, Michael. Lisa, same question.
I'm so glad a housing question was asked because this is my favorite topic. Having worked with at-risk community members and homeless for years, it is by far the most humbling experience I've ever had, aside from working at a refugee camp. The majority of homeless people have suffered severe trauma and have significant mental health illnesses. Putting someone in a home without supportive services and case management is not going to work. They'll eventually be back on the street, and it is a vicious and expensive cycle for us. We need a dual approach of case management and supportive services to make sure people are housing and stable in those houses. I would leverage our relationship with housing navigators, police departments, and nonprofits to get this done. The city is already working towards a wraparound approach for this service, and I fully support this. Additionally, we need to focus on getting people out of renting and into homeownership that frees up rentals and affordable units to ensure a consistent flow of housing stock in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. And now we move to our rapid-fire round, so be ready, and three words or less. We'll start with Lisa. Favorite restaurant in Arvada?
Smoking Finn.
Smoking Finn. Michael?
Golden Europe.
Golden Europe. What did you want to be when you grew up, Michael?
Architect.
Architect.
A cop.
A cop. Biggest pet peeve, Lisa?
Pointing fingers.
Pointing fingers. Mmm. Oh, yeah. Also, politics. Michael?
Standing in line.
Standing in line. Somewhat politics, too. Yes, okay. Who was your role model, Michael?
My dad.
My dad, or your dad, not my dad. My dad's a great guy, too.
Oddly enough, it was your dad.
Yeah, it was my dad. You know Shannon Elty. Lisa?
RBG.
RBG, all right. And favorite sweet treat?
No sweets, fondue.
Fondue, ooh, Swiss cheese, yes, okay. And Michael?
Cherry pie.
Cherry pie. And then, I'm buying you a ticket to anywhere in the world. Where are you going?
Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Window or aisle?
Exit row.
Exit, oh, no, okay. Yeah, this man blinds ahead. Lisa, where am I blind?
Egypt.
Going to Egypt. And window or aisle?
Window.
Window seat. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, let's thank our candidates for being up here, Michael and Lisa. Oh, yeah, you're good. Don't worry. Yeah. All right, and we'll go ahead and have Councilman Marriott and Susie Schuckman come on up, and then the whole drill. And you guys actually get the benefit of knowing the four questions you'd be asked, just not in what order. I'm just going to go and make it easy on myself and get these.
There you go.
Yep. All right, and you guys know the drill, so we'll ping pong back and forth. We'll go ahead and start with Councilman Marriott. Does the city of Arvada have a role in developing attainable housing in our community? If so, what is it? If not, why not?
Good question. So the answer is yes, we do have a role. I wouldn't say we have the primary role, but we do have a role, and we've taken actions to do that already. In my time on council, the city has donated surplus city property to several organizations, including Habitat for Humanity, to develop affordable housing. And so the city provided some subsidy there. We've also cooperated with developers who bring in outside subsidies through the LITAC program and the CHAFA programs and others, and we have appropriately collaborated and cooperated with these organizations. The real question is, should local government subsidize housing, actually provide the subsidy? And in my view, the answer to that is no. We have core responsibilities here at local government that we must do, and until we're doing those to outstanding standard and fully done, we don't have the resources to participate in subsidizing housing from a local level. So yes, we have a responsibility, we fill those responsibilities, and we should continue doing so, but we don't have the primary responsibility.
Thank you, Councilman. Susie, same question.
Thank you so much. So I absolutely do believe that the city of Arvada does have a duty to the residents to provide options for attainable housing. We've seen that the status quo is not working. Housing prices in District Three alone have increased by 25% from this time last year. So if we're not working hard with residents to find real-time solutions, how are we going to be building a more inclusive Arvada that welcomes all families? What I would propose to do is to turn the power back over to residents. I'd like for a resident-led advisory committee to work on forming community trust programs that will instill a sense that we are providing housing options for first-time homebuyers and seniors that are looking to downsize. Because without stepping in, we've seen that it's not working for all of Arvada, and while some steps have been taken, we have so much more work to do.
Thank you very much, Susie. What should the city of Arvada do to meet the growing needs around transportation and infrastructure improvement? And we'll start with Susie this time.
So this is a huge topic of conversation, not only for Arvada but our entire region. We want to focus on multimodal transportation. How are folks getting to and from stores, shops, restaurants, work using bicycles, pedestrian pathways? But there's even more that we could be doing. I look at examples like what's happening in Golden with free automated vehicles that are 100% electric, providing those short-term trips for residents is something that we could certainly emulate, if not copy, here in Arvada. It would be in our best interest to focus on trying to find ways that we can take that stress off of our streets and really get residents involved in ways that we can be more climate-forward thinking, as well as inclusive and accessible for all Arvatans.
Thank you very much, Susie. Councilman, same question.
If you were to ask me any questions?
Yep. The question is, what should the city of Arvada do to meet the growing needs around transportation and infrastructure improvements?
Thank you. So, you know, this is a really good question. In my time on council from eight years ago, we have increased our spending on road maintenance, on our basic infrastructure, transportation maintenance, by about four times, but we still are only spending about half what we should spend. And this is really a priority problem, more so than anything else. Also, in my time on council, the city's budget has nearly doubled in eight years. We really need to take the step of, I believe we should allocate future growth or allocate growth annually of sales tax to our transportation maintenance program, to road maintenance, Thank you. So this is a really good question. In my time on council from eight years ago, we have increased our spending on road maintenance, on our basic infrastructure, transportation maintenance, by about four times. But we still are only spending about half what we should spend. And this is really a priority problem, more so than anything else. Also, in my time on council, the city's budget has nearly doubled in eight years. We really need to take the step of, I believe we should allocate future growth, or allocate growth annually of sales tax, to our transportation maintenance program, to road maintenance. Until we are at a level by which we are doing adequate maintenance, it's absolutely a reprioritization, but it's kind of a programmatic reprioritization. I think it would be the most effective way to get us where we should be on what's probably our most valuable asset and certainly the asset that our residents use most frequently and is most important to everybody.
Thank you, Councilman. We've talked about a lot of issues today, but I'm going to ask each of you, what do you believe is the greatest challenge facing Arvada? Single challenge? I know there's many, but just pick one. And then what is the first step you would take to remedy that challenge if elected? Councilman, you start.
Thank you. So much like the last question, our greatest challenge is our core infrastructure needs and maintenance, not for today and not for tomorrow, but for long term, for the next 20 years, the next 50 years. And I believe we are taking appropriate steps, but we need to continue to do that. We need to focus on it. As with the road maintenance, I think we need to be looking forward far enough and implementing programmatic changes today that yield big results 50 years. But I think our core infrastructure is why we exist as cities. That's a primary reason that we made cities, and I think fulfilling that core responsibility is our number-one job.
Thank you very much. Susie, same question.
So like many of you, I'm sure the past few weeks, maybe your lungs were a little itchy while you were out walking your dog, your eyes were burning a little bit while you were out playing with your kids. Climate change is something that we have to focus on, and finding sustainable issues to really tackle, how are we being smart about infrastructure and investing in protecting parks and green spaces, is one of the number-one challenges I feel we're facing as a community. As someone who's looking to grow and build my family here, I want to make sure that my kids will have parks and green spaces and trails to hike on for as long as they wish to. I think that we do have some really smart people on staff that have some essential strategies around what we could be doing to alleviate some of those issues. But I'd also advocate for increasing the resident capacity on our sustainability advisory committee, as well as bringing someone on staff for the city to focus solely on sustainability issues of how we can be good stewards of the environment.
Thank you very much, Susie. And the last question, and I kind of moved it because it just made sense, being that this is a business event. Susie, we'll start with you on this one. If elected, what would you do to improve opportunities for businesses to be successful in Arvada?
So I've been fortunate enough to work with some really outstanding economic development and business communities throughout the region and here in Arvada to hear firsthand what some of the barriers are for them in achieving that next level of success. What I would primarily want to do is help find ways to support small businesses who are bringing good-paying jobs to Arvada, and specifically focus on women and minority-owned businesses that need that opportunity to flourish. We know that when we provide access for those types of businesses, the entire community benefits. So finding a way for the city to invest in resources that will support all businesses is a top priority, I think, among most Arvatans and hopefully the business community, because we know when one of us does well, we all do well.
Thank you, Susie. And Councilman, same question.
Thank you. So I believe that to create a great business climate, what you need is you need the basics and the basics of local government. We need to maintain and take care of our infrastructure, our road networks, our water, sewer infrastructure. We need to take care of our human part of our city as well. That's quality of life issues like parks, great collaboration and cooperation with our surrounding governments and the governments that we collaborate with. I believe these are the things that set the table for a good business environment. I think we are doing an excellent job here in Arvada. I believe we have one of the best business climates you can possibly have. I think this group, the Chamber of Commerce, plays a huge role in that. And I believe we should continue to support the Chamber of Commerce, participate with the Chamber of Commerce, along with our Economic Development Association. All of these things is what really sets the table, gets government out of the way, and allows businesses to succeed.
Thank you very much, Councilman. And we will move into our rapid-fire question rounds, so we'll start with Councilman. Favorite restaurant in Arvada?
Arvada Tavern.
Arvada Tavern. Susie?
The Bluegrass.
The Bluegrass. Susie, what did you want to be when you grew up?
Astronaut.
Astronaut. Nice. Councilman?
Quarterback for the Denver Broncos.
Quarterback for the Denver Broncos. It's a tough job. Biggest pet peeve? Councilman?
Potholes.
Potholes. Politics, yep.
Wet socks.
Wet socks. Politics, yep. What was your role model, Susie?
Dolores Huerta.
Dolores Huerta. Councilman?
My mother.
Your mother. And favorite sweet treat?
Strawberry ice cream from Scrumptious.
Strawberry ice cream from Scrumptious. Nice, I'm going to have to try that. Susie?
Carrot cake.
Carrot cake. All right, and Susie, I'm buying you a ticket anywhere in the world. Where do you want to go?
I'm going to New Zealand.
New Zealand. Window or aisle?
Aisle.
Aisle. Councilman? Ticket anywhere?
Hood River, Oregon.
Hood River, Oregon. Window or aisle?
Window.
Window. Nice. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. This are your District 3 candidates. Yeah, make sure you... Thank you very much, Susie. Thank you, Councilman. All righty. I'd like to have us just give one more round of applause for all six of the candidates that were here today. I just have to say, I commend each and every one of you. It is no small task to put yourself out there, to run for office, to put your ideas up through the political gauntlet that is running for an election. So I applaud all of you, and as I did before, I also applaud your families and your friends who are going through this process with you, because I don't think they get enough recognition of how much they play in that role, and they have to take on part of that role as well. The candidates have all provided campaign information that was allowed at the front, so they have information in the back right by that door. If you want to grab anything for a candidate who specifically spoke out to you, feel free that was allowed. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close out this portion of it and go to invite Kami Welsh, although I'm...
I'm going to do closing remarks.
Oh, I am so bad at this. I am definitely not the morning person. So we are going to do closing remarks because that is actually a very important thing. So what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and start with District 3, move to District 1, and then finish with at-large. So District 3, if you guys want to come on back up, we're going to go ahead and start with Susie, and then have John give their closing remarks. Thank you, Kami.
Ryan was trying to skip out on giving us one more opportunity to talk to everybody, but thankfully, thanks Kami for the reminder. Thank you again, all of you, for being here today and starting our Friday off right, hearing from us. It really means a lot to us. I do also want to thank again the Chamber for hosting such a fantastic community-building event. And I do want to thank and acknowledge the staff here at the Lamar Center for providing breakfast and welcoming us and setting up all the tables and making sure we have a safe space to come together. So we've heard a lot today about the big challenges facing us here in Arvada, and there's no small task. We've got some really complex issues as we're looking at how we're investing in our future. And that's certainly something that I am up to the task for. I want to be able to build my family here. My partner and I will be hopefully on the track to adopting some children in the future, and we want to make this our home. I researched and moved to Arvada by choice and on purpose, because it's an incredible community where we have relationships with not just our neighbors, but with our fellow business partners, as well as our civic leaders. So to help preserve and protect that, I hope to gain your support this November. I'll be right over here. Feel free to come chat with me. Happy to give you my phone number and email. And let's get to work and figure out how to invest in the future of Arvada together. Thank you.
Well, again, thank you all for being here. I also like to say thank you to all the candidates who are here. You know, this is a difficult endeavor, being a candidate. This is my third time around at it, and it's not really even any easier for me. But for these new candidates particularly, this takes a lot, to put yourself out there, to open yourself to scrutiny, to have to come up here and say, this is what I'm for versus this is what I'm against. And I would encourage everyone in the room to find any of these candidates that you like or you want to support, or maybe all the candidates, and contact them and give them an attaboy. If you so choose, have a talk with them, donate to them. It's what makes local government and local politics work, and I think it's the most important thing we can do. Quickly, for me, this is my third term. I have benefited from the great environment we have in Arvada. I would like to continue that for my children and all your children and all the children who are not here yet. And I appreciate you very much coming out, listening to all of us today. What we do is important. You have important decisions to make, and I really appreciate you being here to find out more and make them. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, your District 3 candidates, Susie Schuckman and John Marriott. Next up, we'll have our District 1 candidates, Randy Mormon and Chelsea Kanda, come up and make their closing statements. We're going to go ahead and start with Randy this time.
Well, thank you again to the Chamber for hosting this excellent event, and thank you all for being here. And I also thank you for moderating. You've done a great job. And I also want to thank my husband and all the support that I have gotten on this journey. I want to start by reflecting on my dad, who passed away in December from COVID. And one of my fondest memories of him was when I was a little kid, working in the garage, sweeping the floor or waxing the car, and he would say to me, "Son, don't start a job unless you're going to finish it. And if you're going to do a job, do it right." And that work ethic has really stuck with me. I love our community here in Arvada. Arvada is home to me. And I believe that we can work together to solve these issues and these problems that we've been talking about. And I have experience to do that. I've been on the Sustainability Committee for five years, and for 10 years now in Arvada, I volunteered with Family Promise and through my church, really getting to know our community. So I believe that we should never lose sight of the community we have and protect it and preserve it and really work to our future. So I will persist and work hard for you and do what my dad has said, to get the job done and do it right for Arvada. Thank you.
I also would like to say thank you again to everybody for coming this morning. And just to let you know, I'm running to serve the citizens of District 1 because I'm one of them. I'm just a neighbor. I'm just a mom trying to raise my family in this wonderful place that we all call home. And it would be such an honor to represent District 1 on city council.
Ladies and gentlemen, your District 1 candidates, Randy Mormon and Lisa Kanda, Chelsea Kanda. I'm batting a thousand at this point. And then finally, we'll end with our at-large folks, so Lisa Smith and Michael Griffith. Lisa, you'll have the microphone first.
Thank you, everyone, for listening. To all of us, I know it's early, so I appreciate it. I hope when we look at our future leaders of this community, we don't just look at the words, but we look at the actions that they do. I don't just talk. I step up and I serve. I rally people and experts and work together to move forward to our solutions. I don't just say I'm an ally of the business community, I show it. I've served on chamber committees. I've helped businesses become more resilient during emergencies, and I've made over 120 gallons of sanitizer with my partner in our backyard to give to businesses. Today, you just saw a few examples of who I am and how I want to continue to serve you. I will bring my broad experience in housing, public safety, and community resiliency to the policy table. If you support me in getting elected, you will be electing an advocate for the community, a person who will be there to listen, to support you, and get the job done. I hope to have your support in November, and if you want to learn more about me, please visit lisafarvada.com. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I opened it up, so I guess I'm going to close it out. Thank you all for joining us. It's early in the morning, beautiful venue. Thank you for the Chambers for putting this together.[1672.01]